Okay, roll call to order. Pledge allegiance, please.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. Today's the June 9th Hillsborough Township Planning Board Meeting. This meeting has been duly advertised according to Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 Public Law, 1975 Sunshine Law. Roll call, please.
Yes, Mr. Peaseon?
Here.
Mr. Julian?
Here.
Mr. Wagner?
Here.
Mr. Hessag?
Here.
Ms. Becareta?
Here.
Vice Chairman Dr. Maruli?
Here.
Mayor Delcor?
Here.
Chairman Lapati?
Here.
First of all, business would be the disposition of minutes dated May 12, 2016, which is in your packet. You have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Roll call.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Hessag?
Yes.
Ms. Becareta?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Dr. Maruli?
Yes.
And Chairman Lapati?
Yes. I'll read off the names for you next time. Next would be for the June 2nd meeting, 2016. Able to vote on that would be Dr. Maruli, Neil Julian, Sam Connors, who's not here, myself, Ken Hashtag, and Stephanie Forrest, and Sally, who showed up late.
I believe myself.
Are you on there?
Yep.
Okay, we'll right past you, sorry.
That's all right?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Julian?
Yes.
Mr. Hessag?
Yes.
Ms. Becareta?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Dr. Maruli?
Yes.
And Chairman Lapati?
Yes. We have a disposition of a resolution for Hillsborough Real TLLC, reference Weissman Enterprises LLC, 04 PB 25 MJ, file number 16 PB 05 RES. It's in your packet. Do we know who's able to vote on that? Does it matter?
I think Mr. Wagner, Mr. Hessag, Ms. Becareta, Vice Chairman Dr. Maruli, yourself. One more for those who need to.
Man on the back here. So those who cannot are Neil Julian, Dr. Mayor Frank Delcor, and Mr. Peaseon. Everyone else is eligible. We have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Okay, roll call.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Hessag?
Yes.
Ms. Becareta?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Dr. Maruli?
Yes.
And Chairman Lapati?
Yes. Any Planning Board business to be discussed, other than today's agenda? David? No? Okay. No special committee reports? All right, any business on the floor, other than what's on today's agenda? Okay, seeing none. Consideration of ordinances, none? So our first up would be the Glengarry, GGRE, File 15 PB 04 MR, Block 182, lots 10, 11, 12, 45, and 46, located at 95 Hamilton Road. Applicants seeking minor subdivision with waivers to reconfigure lot lines by merging all five lots totaling 238.7 acres, then subdividing a lot in the southeastern corner to create one lot consisting of approximately 25.494 acres. Proposed Lot 46, with the remaining lot proposed Lot 11. Approximately 213.25 acres of remaining land on the property in the M Mining Zoning District, EC Review 32315. They're requesting adjournment to July 7, 2016.
Yeah, does anybody here representing Glengarry? Doesn't appear that way, but they have requested an adjournment to what would be your next meeting, July 7.
Right. No further notice required?
No further notice.
We have a motion for that?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Peaseon?
Yes.
Mr. Julian?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Hessag?
Yes.
Ms. Becareta?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Dr. Maruli?
Yes.
Mayor Delcor?
Yes.
Chairman Lapati?
Yes. All right, next, excuse me, Hillsborough Development LLC, File 05 PB 19 SR, 2016 Extension Request, reference Montgomery Properties LLC, 05 PB 19 SR, 04 PB 2 SRV, Block 142.03, Lots 1 and 2, firmly Block 142. B, Lots 1 and 2. Applicant is seeking a one-year extension through June 30, 2017, for the amended preliminary and final major site plan approval. Resolution date 12/08/05. One-year extension approval, resolution date 12/13/07. Preliminary and final major site plan approval granted under the 04 PB 2 SRV, resolution date of 2/3/05. To construct a childcare facility with improvements on the property in the I-1 Light Industrial Zoning District, follows I-2 standards, fronts on highway.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Board, members of the public. My name is Francis P. Linnis, and I'm pleased to represent the owner of the property, Montgomery Development LLC. By way of background, the Permit Extension Act did extend these approvals by law until June 30 of this year. We're seeking a one-year extension. By way of further background, on November 1, 2007, the Planning Board signed and approved the final plans, so there was a substantial effort to get the approval. And I'm sure you Board members know, before you sign off on the plans, a substantial investment has to be made. You have to go get your approval. You have to clear all the conditions of the approval. Since that time, we've proceeded further with site grading, filling, and pad preparation. Storm sewers are in. The detention basin with a vinyl liner and outlet structure is in. Sanitary sewer is in. The parking lot curb is in. The keystone retaining wall is in. The DGA base for the parking lot is in. And the soil erosion and sediment control measures have been implemented as required. What has happened to this client, happened to many developers over the last few years, and that's the economy and the marketing situation. In addition, this is a childcare facility, and there apparently was a restrictive covenant between childcare centers, et cetera. But my client is confident that they should be in a position within the next year to implement the approval in accordance with the approved plans, and we're therefore seeking a one-year extension.
Okay, thank you, Counselor. We have a motion to approve a one-year extension as requested?
How long are you going to leave that silt fence up there for then? Is it going to be extended? Or how long is the silt fence going to remain there as the soil control?
I have the site engineer here with me, and he could probably answer the question.
We'll have to swear him in for testimony, Counselor.
Sure. You've got to be sworn in.
Do you swear to the chief of 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 the chief[833.29]
At this time, no more questions for Dr. Ramaswamy, but I'd like to call our engineer and planner, Wayne Ingram.
What, do you have any questions? I didn't see anybody ask anything.
No.
Okay, we may reserve right to bring him back later, that's okay. Thank you, doctor.
Is your tele chief on?
I do. Wayne Ingram, I-N-G-R-A-M.
I don't know if the board would like, Mr. Ingram was before the board this past January and was approved as an expert. If you'd like, I could go over his credentials again.
You can just briefly go over it again for the record.
Sure.
I have degrees from Rutgers in civil engineering and from NJIT in land surveying. Licensed engineer, planner, and surveyor in the state of New Jersey, and all my licenses are current. Here before approximately 50 municipalities in those capacities and have been accepted as an expert.
We will accept those, thank you. Thank you, Senator.
Mr. Ingram, can you please describe the site plan to the board and what's being proposed?
And the exhibit we placed up there would be A1. It's a colorized site plan exhibit of the plan that's been presented. Essentially, what we have is a 250-foot-long by 34-foot-wide building separated into eight units and a total of 34 parking spaces on the property. We've had some practical difficulties with the site, partly related to some of the uses, I'm sorry, the existing conditions on the property, namely the width of the lot. So we basically have designed, we've designed the site to place the building back approximately 150 feet and have a driveway leading in from 206 and the parking just to the north of the building. The problem we had was with the front of the property is that there's a very steep drop-off, and there's basically a hole that exists between our property and the neighboring property to the south. When we considered locating the building further forward, it would have led to probably a 12- or 14-foot retaining wall essentially, foundation, just to level out the building so that it could be at the same level as the driveway. So that was one of the practical difficulties that we had with the site. The proposal is also to remain outside of any environmentally constrained areas on the rear of the property. We have wetland areas as well as stream buffers on the lot, and we have NJDEP applications pending to obtain permits, or essentially to verify the limits that we have shown. We're not actually proposing any disturbance of those areas. We're actually proposing to revegetate those areas from what they are today. We are a minor project, proposing less than an acre of disturbance and a quarter acre of new impervious, and as part of that, we are exempt from Delaware Ratten Canal Commission Review. We have, however, installed a, or propose to install, a stormwater basin so that we can reduce our runoff and keep it consistent with the existing condition. So even though we're below those limits, we thought that a necessary component to our, to our application. We are proposing tree compensation, the majority of which will take place on-site. We are, however, proposing to take any excess for which we cannot accommodate and give that to the Township Tree Fund if that's preferred. So that essentially is the site we have. In the northwestern corner of the parking lot is where we're proposing our trash enclosure. We've evaluated that for the ability for trash trucks to deliver and pick up, and again, it would take some various movements, and the intention would be for trash pickup to take place in the off-hours, early morning hours before the property was occupied, so that the truck could, cannot have to back out onto the highway. We have practical difficulties due to the width of the property in providing adequate access for a fire truck to completely turn around in the facility. I think this is a difficulty that's seen on many properties in this script, simply because of their width. Some of the other options we considered for the site were to, instead of making such a long and narrow building, to kind of condense it and locate it further forward and have a centralized parking in the rear. What we found is that that actually led to the ability to have less parking on-site because of the width of the lot, and we still could not turn a truck around in that area. So we have received your fire chief's comments, and we agree to comply with all of them except the fact that we can't have the turnaround for the fire truck. It would need to back out onto 206. However, we also note that that's a condition that I think is fairly common for the commercial businesses in this area, that all suffer from somewhat narrow lot widths to accommodate such a large turning radius. I believe that essentially describes the site.
Thank you. Can you address the four variances that we're seeking?
Sure. The first is for lot width at setback. There's a 200-foot requirement and 125 feet is provided. That's really an existing condition. For front yard, there's a requirement to be 20 feet. We are at 150.1, so set substantially further back than the, than the zone permits. The third is for minimum FAR, so we're certainly under the maximum, but we are below the minimum threshold. And again, this is really a function of the fact that we can't make this building any larger and provide any parking to accommodate it. This is what we consider a reasonable amount of space that this property can provide, so we're not trying to ask for more space that we can't suit on our site. And the final one is for the minimum buffer. 15 feet is required. We're currently proposing 15 feet to the north. However, on the southern side of the building, we are proposing 10 feet. And again, this is really a function of our lot width. If we, we've, one of the design waivers we're requesting is to not have a 30-foot-wide drive aisle, because that would have caused us to be even further encroaching into those setbacks. So we've tried to do what we can to keep ourselves within that limit as much as possible, but frankly, if we make it much narrower, the building will be too narrow to really be functional. And we believe, we believe we can mitigate that with adequate, you know, plantings and by doing what we can to dress up the building that's proposed.
Mr. Ingram, let's turn to the planner's letter, Mr. Maskey's letter. Can you explain to the board what waivers we'd be seeking in terms of design?
Sure. I think many district requirements were laid out, some of which we intend to comply with, some of which we cannot. Just to direct to page three, under item 5.1, the GA district requirements. The first is that a minimum of 40% of the front facade be located 10 feet from the property line. Again, we have the practical difficulty of both the narrowness of our lot and the large depression that exists in the front of the property. We believe it would somewhat make the building stand out like a sore thumb due to the height of that back wall, and it's also somewhat impractical to construct in that area. The second is the primary entrance shall accommodate pedestrian access from the street as well as from the parking lot. Obviously, we have pedestrian access from the parking lot. However, we are not proposing it from Route 206. One of the issues we have is that we believe that that's a requirement more suited for retail development. Typically, you're not going to see a requirement to, where pedestrians are going to be traveling down 206 to come to a doctor's office. People will come there via cars. And we have the practical difficulty with sidewalks on 206 on our side of the street, again, due to that large depression. We could, if it's the township's request, install a sidewalk to the north of our, of our entry driveway. That seems feasible, but to the south, within the right-of-way, it's essentially three-to-one slopes, and there is no sidewalk on the properties to the south either for that reason. All the sidewalks, there's a very large bridge and some other crossings on the opposite side because of those practical difficulties. Number three is to have a 97-foot right-of-way, which we agreed to do. The fourth is a minimum of five-foot wide sidewalk and 10-foot wide planting strip along the 206 frontage. Again, we have substantial trees on the road currently, so those will be proposed to remain where they're not required to be removed for the driveway. The difficulty, again, is in having the sidewalk on the southern end of the driveway. The next requirement is the paving materials shall identify pedestrian pathways within the parking lot, and those walkways shall be five feet in width, shall be provided from public sidewalks adjoining the property to the principal entrance. We will be providing the required width of the sidewalk, but we weren't proposing any walkways within the parking lot itself for the reasons mentioned. The next requirement is for fencing greater than 50 feet in length to have a change in plain height material or texture. We can agree to that. I think what we would like to do is have some, essentially lattice work on alternating panels to give some, some character to the fence, so we will comply. And the next requirement is where loading outdoor storage and service areas are abutting residential uses, there shall be an earthen berm of six feet. Our proposal doesn't really have any loading zones, outdoor storage, or service areas other than the trash enclosure, and the trash enclosure we've enclosed behind a substantial fence in landscaping.
Let's move to 5.2 of Mr. Maskey's letter.
So these are the general design guidelines for architectural standards. First comment is that all principal buildings must front upon an existing creative street. Buildings should be oriented such that entrances are clearly identifiable and direct access from a sidewalk. Again, for the same reasons, we're requesting relief, again, from the guideline because of the topography and what we believe would be a very detrimental impact from having the large wall due to that depression. The next is that the building should be oriented to allow for the use of common driveways, where reduction in the number of curb openings will enhance the streetscape. Again, the location of the building is somewhat limited by that width of the site. Both properties to the south and to the north are residential, and I think one of the later comments is a request for cross-access. We have no objection to cross-access, or in this case, trying to use common driveways to limit access on the highway. The difficulty we have is that since both properties are residential, it's hard to give joint access in any defined manner because there's no plan for site plan for those properties, so there's no actual place we can, we know where to interconnect. Personally, I think if those properties are ever redeveloped, what you'll find is that they're going to suffer from the same deficiencies and need for variances, and also with the request to have a fire truck turnaround, those lot, the lot to the north is narrower than ours, and the one to the south, while slightly wider, I still don't believe could be accomplished. You can, however, if cross-access is ever obtained, you would have the ability to circulate a fire truck through because they could come in one and go through the other. So I think down the road, we would have, all these lots could have the ability to have that turnaround and help one another in that aspect, but without those properties' help, neither they nor our property can really accommodate that request.
Would you be willing to stipulate that if the board so chose to approve this, that in the future, if either property is redeveloped as a commercial site, that you would be willing to at least enter into a cross-access easement?
Yes, I think that's important for the reasons mentioned. The next comment is that large setbacks that isolate standalone buildings are discouraged, and therefore appropriate, the appropriate board may reduce adherence to a maximum build-to-line in order to maintain continuity of this.
Sorry, not reduce, require.
May require, excuse me.
Big difference.
Very. To create continuity of the streetscape. We agree, you know, we, it's not a personal objection we have to locating the building further forward in the property. It really is the practical difficulties of the site, and again, if we move the building forward and try and create centralized parking in the rear, we found that we still can't accommodate a fire truck, and the lot width is not such that it actually allows us to add substantially more parking, because we end up having to have entire circulating loop of a driveway, but we can't even put parking on both sides because of the lot width, even if we did angled parking. And because of that, it didn't seem like a preferred design method, because it's just creating a lot of impervious for very little benefit. The next comment is that all junction accessory boxes, HVAC, or rooftop equipment shall not be visible from the view of adjacent properties and public right-of-ways. We agree that we will screen all of those so that they are not visible. Section B, single-story buildings shall be discouraged in an effort to provide a sense of enclosure, which is appropriately proportioned to the street. Two-story buildings are encouraged. We are proposing a one-story building, but our attempts with the architecture have been to give it somewhat a two-story feel. For one, we don't want to go up because we don't have the room to create more parking to accommodate it. Number two is doctor's offices, we're not generally trying to encourage people to have to go up to a second floor to go to a doctor's office. So what we've tried to do is design a building such that we give it that feel, but we would prefer just to do the one-story because it's all that the use requires. We also, again, felt that given the residential uses on each side, to go up unnecessarily could just further create, and especially because of the reduction in the buffer that we're proposing, which would seem overly large against those adjoining properties. The next comment is that proposed commercial buildings should respect the scale of any adjacent residential buildings and provide an orderly transition to a different scale of development. I think when you look at that comment versus the one above, that's exactly what we tried to do, was to respect the scale of those neighboring developments. If large blank surfaces are proposed, they should be for some compelling design purpose, and the design should incorporate mitigating features to enrich the appearance of the project. It is noted that the southern and the eastern front, or side that faces the frontage on Route 206, were somewhat plain. We have no objection to adding some windows there, but we also propose to install landscaping to make sure that it's visually appealing.
Could I ask you to embellish on that a little bit? You have a 250-foot-long blank wall facing the residence to the south of you. You're talking about a couple, a few windows, a few trees. Can you embellish a little bit more? And you're also asking at the same time for a variance to be closer to that line than you're allowed to be. So you're closer to, you're asking for a variance to be closer to the line than you should be, and you're asking for a waiver to put in a 250-foot blank wall. Can you give us a little more on that?
We agree that we don't want to install a blank wall, so what we're proposing to do is to add architectural elements such as windows, visual divisions, changes in materials to break up that surface. Again, that would be along that rear wall. And then I think, as shown in our landscaping plan, we had proposed, again, it's not a very wide building, but we are proposing substantial landscaping in the front there, which should break up that side. Now, the property is also located behind a decent amount of screening along the frontage, which we're proposing to remain. Appears our landscaping plan has five, five trees along the frontage, and then if you look on the southern side of the property, we've proposed a landscaping buffer that consists of groupings of three larger shrubs or trees, and then smaller shrub rows along the property line to basically break that up. And again, with the location of the building where we've chosen, it's in somewhat of a flat area, so again, our intention was to put it in an area so that it didn't appear overly large or have a large foundation wall that was going to be visible to that neighbor. If we try and pull this building to the front, you can see there's substantial relief from approximately elevation 80 down to, let me see here, down to about 65. So you have about a 15-foot drop if we try and locate the building to the front, and the only way to accomplish that would be either through a retaining wall or a very tall foundation wall. So you'd have basically 15 feet, the building and then the roof line would just really stand out, I believe, from the, from the character of the area. B5, buildings shall avoid long, monotonous, uninterrupted walls and/or roof planes. Individual buildings within the overlay zone shall not exceed 100 feet in length along any wall, roof, or footprint plane. Again, I think for the same reasons, you know, we are proposing a longer building here as opposed to a shorter, taller structure, mainly again, because this is a doctor's office. Going to the second floor just creates the need for an expensive elevator and forces people to go up the staircase, and creates what we considered was an overly large structure given the two surrounding lots.
Just a comment on that second floor, comment, comment on your comment. Thank you. This is in, at the border of our town center zone. The property to the north is in the town center, and the town center does not permit any offices on the first floor. So how do you address that point where you're saying medical offices can't be on the second floor, but if you were one lot up, you couldn't be on the first floor? You would have to be on the second floor. How do you, how do you get around that? How do you say, on the one hand, on one side of that property boundary, you can't have medical offices on the second floor? If you're on the other side of the property boundary, you'd have to be on the second floor.
I mean, I'm not saying that you can't produce a building where medical offices are on, aren't on the second floor. It's just for the medical office, you know, the doctor, it's his belief that it further serves the patients to be on the first floor rather than the second. It is permitted in the zone.
It's a preference. It's not something you can't do. It's your preference to put the.
It's a preference. We do believe it's better designed for this, for this property.
Thank you.
C1, all rooftop air conditioning units, HVAC, elevator housing, satellite dishes, and other outdoor utility equipment shall be screened from the public right-of-way view by the use of walls and other roof features. Noise-generating equipment shall be properly baffled in accordance with applicable regulations. Everything will be screened very well. The only thing that is generally visible from within the property is the satellite dishes, because they need that visual line of sight, but we propose to install trees and other landscaping to screen it from the public view. D, entrances and windows. The primary entrance of all retail stores shall be located along and accessed from the street sidewalk. It appears that these are mostly, this is related to retail more so than office, so I don't know that necessarily be applicable.
Well, except for the fact that the design of the building is a traditional strip-type center, which could easily be office or shop fronts, so it might be splitting hairs.
Isn't retail use permitted in the zone?
Yes.
Will prevent them from having somebody come in with retail use?
That's true. If, if, for instance, I realize the intention is to have all medical offices, but it's physically suited for retail uses as well, which are permitted uses, so it is possible that going forward, these could be occupied by retail uses.
Would the applicant not have to return to the board if they wish to change the use? I mean, I think one of the arguments that we are, we're making here, and we believe, is that we don't need public access from Route 206, and the reason we're saying that is because we're an office, not a, not a retail. So we also believe that if we were to ask you for office or retail, that that argument might not apply, so that's really our reasoning there. E1, the primary public entrance shall face the street. Architectural treatment of the front facade shall be continued, and its majority around all visibly exposed sides of the building, and it shall be designed to be consistent with regard to style, material, color, and detail. Again, due to the location of the, of an orientation of the lot, we've located the entrances interior to the site simply because we couldn't have this sort of strip configuration and would have to just, again, it doesn't work on the site to allow a driveway to come around the back and create any sizable structure. This just really seemed to be the best configuration for the property.
Can you read the last sentence in that one, please?
Sure. Rear building elevations facing adjoining residential areas shall be aesthetically enhanced with materials to match the front of the building. And I think that was something we agreed to earlier, to dress that up, to install windows and extend those features around so that it was an attractive building. E4, facade shall consist of no more than three materials, textures, or colors. Heavier, more textured, and darker materials and colors shall be below the others. Does not apply to trim and shutters, which are encouraged to be painted, stained, or sited with a contrasting color from the main building. Will certainly comply with that requirement and will provide trims as requested. E5, compatible window design, the width and profile trim boards, provision of shutters. Post-windows-designed trim color shutters and other architectural features will be provided in a uniform fashion as requested. Six solid blank windowless walls or service areas visible from the public view shall be prohibited. Again, we're going to be adding those windows and other visual divisions and changes in materials so that we satisfy that requirement. Facade materials shall be clad in brick, stone, cast stone, hardy plank, wood clapboard, simulated manufactured clapboard. The use of, particularly, our point here is that the use of EFIS is permitted. EIFS material in this, in our case, will be limited to the maximum 30% of facade, and we will comply with the facade materials requested.
Can we maybe just talk about the ones you're not going to comply with?
Sure. Trying my best here.
Could you read a little slower?
Sure.
Thanks.
We're not using brick, so that's E8 we will comply. E9, we will not use prohibited materials. E10, we will comply. E12 and E13 will comply. And the fencing in E15 will be made compatible with the design of the building. So for F2, the proposal is to have arcades are only five feet wide instead of the eight-foot requirement. Again, that's due to site width. If we try and widen that, the only way to do that is to encroach upon the buffer to the north, so we're making that as wide as we possibly can at the five feet. We're going to have approximately 18 to 30 inches of roof overhangs to add to that width for a total of about 6.5 to 7 feet, so really just short of that requirement due to that lot width.
Can we just make a comment? When you say the only way that you can do that, it's really the only way that you can do that with the current layout?
Yes.
So it's not the only way that you could do it, because, I'll let you finish, but there's, you know, there are alternatives.
Sure.
Yeah.
Such as reducing the width of the building.
Well, yeah, another alternative is to, to kind of better meet the spirit of, this gateway area would be two stories wider with the parking not going past the building and all the park, all the parking in the rear.
Again, we did consider that configuration, but what we found is it just led to excessive amount of pavement without really improving the parking, because with the width of the lot, we couldn't provide, basically, a preferred design of parking is drive aisle and parking on each side. So if we try to put all the parking in the rear and have that parking come around in a circular fashion to come out, we can't fit a second row of parking on each side. If we come around, we can fit one.
Yeah, when you say preferred, preferred how?
Preferred is, I don't think there's value in adding impervious surface if you don't need to. We try to be efficient with the amount of impervious, keep the lot as green as possible. And, you know, to really try and make that more conforming and get the parking, it basically caused us to have to violate, continue to violate the buffer requirements to the sideyards. So for instance, to meet the town requirement of 20-foot-deep parking stalls, a 30-foot aisle, and a 20-foot parking stall on the other end, that's 70 feet. So at 125-foot lot, clearly you can see that we couldn't have two rows of parking next to each other, because the bare minimum for that would be 140 with no buffer whatsoever. So we looked at many scenarios to try and locate that. We've had concept plans. It just didn't create a decent amount of parking for the property.
Dave, is that recommended for this, this area that there'll be parking on either side of the aisle?
Well, no, but I mean, we're hearing a lot of testimony about how constrained this property is, and I'm wondering if they're proposing too much for the site.
Yeah.
We keep getting told we can't do it, we can't do it, we can't do it. Well, can you split the building? Can you turn them so they face 206? Put the parking in the rear? Things of that sort?
Right. The thought, the comment. The thought, the comment I was making before was, i- if you look at, you can get the same square footage and two stories. Of course, you'd be adding elevators, you know, which is, which of course is cost, but you could get the square footage, you could widen the footprint. So the footprint is smaller, but widen it and have a driveway that goes right past it and all the parking behind. That gives you a wider facade towards 206 which allows you to embellish that, to make that look like a nicer building, and a smaller wall on the side that's facing the house to the south of it. You know, it would, this doesn't seem to fit the spirit of this area as well as, well, doesn't seem to fit the spirit of this gateway area.
Well, with regard to the, to the size of the building, you know, we have some conflicting things that we're trying to accomplish.
Right.
The township has a minimum FAR requirement and we're far short of that. So the further we try and shrink the building, you know.
I don't think I said shrink the building. I didn't say shrink the building, no.
Well, I heard too much on the lot.
No, 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 I didn't say that at all, no. By making a two-story that reduces the footprint of it, I'm not talking about shrinking the building and you still have plenty of space to add elevators. And, you know, so many medical office buildings have, have elevators. I mean, we, we have them in town farther down on 206. So you're reducing the footprint and then instead of having all the visible parking and a building where the, there's such a limited reveal on the, on the 206 side, you know, it looks more like a, like the, you know, kind of the strip mall appearance than we would like for the intent of this gateway area. And, and then you're just trying to squeeze everything in, saying, you know, you're unable to meet some of the requirements, but it's because you want that type of building that you're unable to meet some of the requirements. I mean, you, if you had parking in the back, it would be possible for a fire truck to turn around.
It would not.
There's no way of doing a radius in the back to, to allow the?
The fire trucks, I believe, have like a hundred and five foot radius for the size structure trying to be brought in.
I stand corrected, okay.
I mean, the lot's a hundred and twenty-five feet wide.
Okay. Yeah, I stand corrected on that. Okay, so, so my point is, is that I just, I wanted to clarify that, I want to hear you say that it's, that it's difficult or that you're unable to do it. It's only part of that is because of the way you have the, the building laid out. It's not that you can't do it or that it's impossible to do it, it's just that it's difficult or impossible with the way it is laid out right now.
Again, we see some, and I'm not going to say they're conflicting requirements because they're not, but when some requirements say that we should respect the character of our neighboring properties and others say that we should do two stories or that we're, you know, we should be closer to the street, we're trying to weigh these and things, and we're open to listening to the township and what's requested to try and come to a plan that everyone's happy with. I think, you know, our concern was that, you know, we didn't, we didn't want to have an overly tall building next to residential structures.
True, yeah, that's valid, but the idea of this gateway is that we're looking for those, the possibility of those uniform or, you know, two-story buildings that are on adjacent properties, not that you're going to have a two-story building and that there will always be a house next to it.
Sure.
Okay, it's, it's the concept that, you know, that we're talking about. So we have to also balance, you know, those, those conflicting needs and desires and, yeah.
Yeah, and as far as the height of the building goes, you're going thirty-five feet high anyway.
In the center. We're trying to create an articulated.
To say two stories would be too high because of the residences, you're going thirty-five feet high anyway. So.
True, but we do believe that's in one section and having a section at that height as opposed to an entire structure, we thought it created some character to the property. And looking at the neighboring lots, I don't think the property to the north suffers from the problem, but the property to the south has the same issue we do, just in terms of building location. The depression we have, they also have. So I would, I would assume that if that property were ever redeveloped, they will have practical difficulties being as close to the street, which, you know, may not be to the exact point you're getting to now, but it just goes to how we selected the location of our, of our development. Just to go through the rest of the comments. We'll comply with four and five. G, we weren't proposing any street lights along the highway. We just have internal lights to the site, so I'm not sure if that was applicable. Twelve-foot high decorative lampposts will be provided at regular intervals along commercial or mixed-use streets. We could propose more of a decorative fixture if that was preferred. Light posts should be spaced no greater than sixty feet on center. We tried to minimize the number of light posts, so they may exceed that in some locations, but really we're just trying to put in as few as possible while providing adequate lighting. Our proposal relating to G5 is to have LED lights at fifteen-foot height. So I don't believe that was mentioned in the ordinance, but I think that's a common way people are going and it produces a nice attractive light. And we'll, we'll comply with six and seven. I think I basically relates to things we testified to previously about where we're proposing sidewalks and our access. J2, again, that goes back to the issues we have with interconnection at this time. Four, driveway inside yard shall occupy no more than thirty percent of the lot frontage along the street and find that this is non-pierp pedestrian access. Again, we have difficulties with that just due to the width of what we can comply with to have a building and a drive aisle on a narrow lot under any configuration. J9, this is another comment regarding sidewalks and connections. We believe we're adequately connected within our parking lot and have provided reasons why we're not proposing it along 206. And J11 relates to parking areas being screened with walls, fences, or landscaping with emphasis on the portions running on the street. And again, we're screening those so that we don't have spillover of street lights, headlight glare or noise onto adjacent properties. We do have a fence that goes along the width of our, or the length of our parking lot to the north, and again, none of that's visible from the south through the building. Going down to I, or excuse me, L, we'll be proposing a fence around the perimeter of the trash enclosure with compliant gates and our dumpsters will be secure lids. And our screening walls will be six feet. And after that, I believe we're just into parking where we do show that we're compliant with the required number of parking spaces. We certainly agree that our signs will be compliant with the township ordinance and we agree to any of the remaining comments in the letter. Skipping over to the review letter from Mr. White. In general, we essentially agree to everything in the comment letter. I'll just skip to the ones that really require any addressing. I think relates to number three, we've discussed our issues with cross-access, but would agree to do it in the future if it was feasible. Six requests are asked if we have a basement. We do not. Eight requests that we have a banned accessible handicap stall. It's been designed that way, however, we'll add the proposed, the necessary signage. Number nine, request a one-foot wider sidewalk. The practical difficulty with that is we either have to take it off the building. We are proposing a twenty-five-foot wide drive aisle. Twenty-four is, is generally standard even though the, the ordinance requires thirty. The only other option would be to shift everything to the, to the north by a foot which would violate the, the buffer yard. So there's a lot of ways we can accomplish that. We could do whatever the board prefers in that scenario, whether it's shift it up, reduce the parking width, or our last resort would be if we had to remove the foot from the building. Item 10 says that we have no provisions for a loading zone. The, the use itself does not really necessitate the need for a loading zone since we're not really a retail establishment. Every vehicle that comes in for deliveries is generally, you know, small delivery trucks that can, are, you know, picking up samples, things of that nature that will be able to park in the regular parking stalls. We've confirmed that a garbage truck can turn around in the lot, again, with the hours that we're proposing. It will have to go into parking stalls to accommodate that, but we don't believe that there will be a conflict in, in doing so based on the hours of pickup.
Can you guarantee that there'll never be a car parked there blocking the gate?
It could never be guaranteed, however, again, given the length of the parking lot we're proposing, if a car was located in one stall and they couldn't turn around immediately, they could back up, you know, another twenty feet to the point where they could. We are proposing to be well off the hours of use though. Item 12 regarding the sidewalk. We will provide the sidewalk on the line 206 running to the north.
I think the microphone may have turned off.
Green light, is there, should be a green light. Tap it, see if it's, there you go.
Sorry about that. So we'll propose a sidewalk on the north side of our, our access driveway, but to the south it was impractical, so we would donate to the sidewalk fund. Grading comment number one, our proposal would be to install guide rail as necessary to protect from the, the drop-offs. We also agree to all the other comments in that section. Relating to stormwater, we will comply with everything except number six. We have, again, the practical difficulty of the slope of the site. We would like to take our roof leaders from the front of the building and direct them in, in the fashion requested base. It's the ones in the rear that we wouldn't be able to collect due to the slope. But again, we're, we're probably drastically reducing the amount of, again.
Why don't you just use the one that's corded right there?
We'll be drastically reducing the amount of runoff to the other properties to the south that currently go to that depression because our driveway will be cutting off that off-site stormwater that would be heading that way and we'll be picking that up in inlets and directing it to the, to the system within the, the state highway. So that should really improve the drainage in the area.
So basically, your detention basin won't be discharged in the manner it's proposed to discharge, it's going to be piped all the way down to the inlet?
Yes, we agree to that, yes. Regarding lighting, we will comply. The third request is to provide information regarding point-by-point analysis, which we will certainly agree to do, and the height that we're proposing is fifteen feet. Landscape comments, we're proposing that ten of our trees will be provided off-site and what we meant by that was by donating to the tree fund. We didn't want to locate any trees south of the driveway simply because with all the, that being really, it's a depression with no outlet. So we're concerned that if excessive amounts of stormwater go in there, it just, that it will kill the trees by being basically in a bathtub. So we spaced the trees in the rear. We, we tried to re-vegetate the, the wetland buffer where it currently is not. So, but we're trying to do that at a, at a spacing that's adequate to allow the trees to thrive. So we put as much as we could within that area, but we do have a deficiency given the space. And we will comply with all the other requirements. The only one of note is planning review four. Again, our, our proposal would be to install the suggested trees on the north side only, not the south because we're, we basically have a wall for our driveway before it goes into that depression. Otherwise, we just have to bring in a substantial amount of fill to put those trees in. And again, that area is fairly well screened anyway, so it really wouldn't be visible regardless. Regarding outside agency approvals, I believe we have the Somerset Planning Board. We're exempt from DNR with this proposal. We, and we have applications pending with DEP for both of those items listed as well as with the DOT. I believe we're on receipt of the Hillsborough Township Fire Officials Comment Letter. As I stated before, we can comply with every comment in there except the turnaround and I believe that applies regardless of our configuration.
Mr. Ingram, could you also address the comments requested by the Environmental Commission?
They requested that we provide the LOI from DEP, as I mentioned, that's pending. Verifying the acreage of the disturbance and the net increase in impervious coverage. I also believe those are stated pretty well in the plans that were point nine-nine acres and were about four hundred square feet short, I would say, you know, even with the reconfigurations that we're doing to comply with the comment letters from meeting the impervious coverage maximum. And we do show the stream corridors on the site plans, that, that line is identified on there. So we believe we satisfied those requests.
There are two other comments made in, or two related comments in the Environmental Commission's report. One is that, well, they note that you show that there's a bald eagle foraging habitat and as well as a habitat for wood turtles on the site. Can you talk about that a bit and how you intend to address that?
So the buffers that we show on our site plan from the, from the wetlands are the maximum one-hundred-and-fifty-foot buffer that wetlands can have within the state. So what we've shown is about as conservative of a buffer as is required. That is, again, the maximum and that's what's affected that limit. So again, the area that is within that is already primarily disturbed. It's, it's a lawned area, it's not wooded. So what we're proposing to do is actually to re-vegetate and, and reforest this environmentally sensitive area. So we see that as a, certainly a positive of the project.
Just a comment, I think it's, it's important though that you get the LOI from the DEP because until you do, you just don't know.
Sure.
How they're going to delineate those wetlands and you're, you're ten foot from the, from the buffer, you know, with your proposal, so.
We, we've already talked to the reviewer. They've been to the site. We didn't hear any objection regarding the rear wetland. The only area honestly that we're debating was the front of the property. They believe there's a small wetland area in that depression, but based on the size, if they determine it's a wetland, it wouldn't even have a buffer, it would be a zero-foot buffer. But regardless, it just goes further to our point of why we're not trying to disturb that front area, that isolated depression because.
So there was somebody out that, it did come out?
Yeah, the DEP has already visited the site and again, that's, they haven't expressed concerns regarding the rear location. It was pretty obvious where the wetland line was.
The delineation was?
Was performed, yes. Yep.
So you will get the LOI before you start?
It's currently pending, so we'll obviously provide that as a condition of any approval.
Could you also explain the, where the Soil Conservation District approval is?
It's been submitted. We have one comment at this point which we're, we're replying to.
At this time, no further questions for the witnesses. If the board has any questions.
I have a couple. I'll take a look. First, was there ever any consideration as to possibly making the parking under the building? Especially if you say, for example, the first floor would be a mock floor and then the second floor would be the building, the medical offices, so therefore all that parking could be shifted under the existing building without increasing your impervious surface.
From a cost perspective, I could say it's probably very prohibitive to basically to build up a building.
We're not worried about cost as much as getting it right on the facility.
I, I understand that, but we, I mean, if that were the requirement, it probably wouldn't be built. It just wouldn't be financially feasible for the site. We're trying to be the first property here to develop and try and get ourselves somewhat close to what the township would request where the other properties are not really conforming either, but we have to, it has to be viable for the, for the client.
Was there any consideration to, to buy more land so that we wouldn't have to fit it on to something this small, like Jason lots?
I have not discussed that with the, with the applicant.
Okay.
Mr. Ramaswamy can testify to that if you prefer. Mr. Ramaswamy can testify to that, if you prefer.
Yeah, I'm sure that there's a lot to the south and north that there's possible, maybe there's some land to purchase that would help on this application. And lastly, is with the plan that I see here, I see it from a, a snow removal standpoint, and there's another Mr. White, maybe, it's a nightmare. You have a five-foot fence to the north, and you have a building to the south. You have nowhere to put the snow really at all, other than to push it into the stormwater basin, which will have chemicals and ice melt. There were two, go to the, all the way to the left, and create a drain situation where all the snow now will melt and go down the hill and create a slip-and-fall hazard for medical patients coming in. So, just, because I've done buildings like this over the years that were built without thinking about snow removal, and it is a slip-and-fall nightmare. And this is, is an accident waiting to happen.
Well, I think snow removal could also be accomplished in the southern corner of the site in that depression. Again, no matter what we've done, we've said that...
Throw all the snow down there, I guess, but then you're just taking snow and you have to have it trucked out by a loader every time it snows. Instead of a plow, because you can't plow it, you'd have to have a loader every time it snows to move the smallest amount of snowfall. So, just, just my, my expertise, opinion, because I do this for a living, this will be very expensive to do snow removal because this cannot be done with a plow. And your insurance, whoever's going to take this, to take this site, is going to be very expensive to... If I had to do it, the liability insurance would be, not to bust on your lawyers, but a field day. So, I would suggest possibly creating somewhere to push snow, or if you can lose these islands somewhere, that would become a, or some drains in the center of the lots to move the melting snow out, so you do not have an ice situation. Because you're going to have, the way the sun goes over this property, you're not going to get natural melt.
So you're suggesting inlets within the parking lot to collect the stormwater?
Yes, somewhere to...
No objection to that.
That's all I have for you. Anyone else?
So, I guess just kind of piggybacking maybe off of some of the earlier comments, this is property bordering on the town center. It's not in-town center, but it's certainly encroaching on it. And the gateways, when you look at the way this property is laid out, recognizing you have a number of natural constraints on what we have here, but because of the way, and maybe what you're trying to do on the property, with the size of the building, the way it's configured, the layout, the one floor, it seems to be deviating fairly significantly from what I think we, we've envisioned in that, in that gateway zone. And I'm wondering if there's a possibility or willingness to, to think about some other design of the building that maybe, whether it's a two-story instead of one, or a flip of the, of the way it's configured, or some other design element that, that brings it a little closer to, I think, what we envisioned and doesn't create the view for some of the adjacent properties and allows access to some of the sides of the building that, or some of the sides of the property that currently now are cut off. It just seems to be, the way the building is being laid out on that property, even with the constraints, it's, it's almost like you've maximized the impact of the constraints by what you've been able to do there. And I'm just wondering if there's a desire or willingness to think about, is there another way to, to put that building there? I certainly am, you know, I'm happy we want to get a, a medical office facility here. I think it's, it's a perfect use for what we're trying to do in the gateway. I just think with the constraints you've got of the, of the, of the natural lot itself, and then what you're doing with the building, it's... It's tight. It's, it's tight.
If you give us a minute, I just want to confer...
All right, we'll take a five-minute recess. We'll give everybody a chance to rest, and you can collect the clients. We're supposed to recess, be back at 5:29. Councilor, we have a couple more minutes.
Sure.
We're back. Mr. Wagner stepped out, and he'll join us shortly. Okay, Counselor?
Thank you. During the recess, we took the opportunity to listen to the board's comments and see if, with site constraints, it was possible to implement some of the advice of the board, and I'm going to let Mr. Ingram explain what we've developed.
So we'll certainly take a look at making revisions to the plan. I think one thing we'll propose is to, instead of being 250 feet long, we'll essentially cut the building in half and put that as a second story, and try and get a little more width of building along the frontage by maybe reconfiguring the parking to basically widen out the building, maybe another 20 feet or so into that parking stall, so that the majority of the parking appears to be hidden somewhat behind the, the property. We can try and push the building forward a little bit, but again, we're fighting those grades. But I think another element we could add is a front sidewalk and door, so that it may have entrances on both sides, but it'll appear to be a little bit more fronting on the, on the street. And essentially, the building would just be slightly larger than it is now, but again, half the size and utilizing that, that two-story configuration. We think we can do that with some moderate changes to the parking lot, making some changes to the location of the stormwater basins. We still just do believe that to try and do a wraparound parking lot in the back, regardless of our building configuration, it didn't work. We, you can go to angled parking, and that serves some purposes, but it also makes the aisles too narrow to get a trash truck through. So, 125 feet is just too narrow for that, but we can make it appear as if the parking with a single aisle is hidden more so in the back of the property. So that's, that's generally how we would propose to revise this building, to make it taller and closer to the street.
Let me know if Mr. Wagner is back on the dais. Okay. Any comments based on that, what we said? Well, obviously, we would like to see that in writing, and then have our engineers and everybody look at that, just to see if it makes sense. I appreciate the fact that you're willing to look at it again. And I don't know if, if Mr. Ramaswamy could testify or answer the question if there was other property available that he was considering purchasing that would make this application easier.
At this point in time, there was nothing for sale. We looked into it, and as of now, there's nothing for sale.
The adjacent properties were...
Yeah, both adjacent.
Thank you. Yeah. Do we have any motion to open public questioning for this witness? Second, on favor? Aye. All right, so we will have any questions based on the testimony of, of the engineer from the public on this side of the room first? Go ahead, come on. State your name and your address. Please come up. We have, you can put it on there. Now, if you can't introduce it into, we'd have to have some, it's going to be evidence, we would have to have that looked at, if it's, you're going to put any, introduce anything. Well, let's see what you have, and we'll have the people look at it. Right now, you got an hour. But remember, this, this is questions on just the testimony of what the, what the engineer and, has said, okay?
Yes.
Okay. State your name, please, and, and your address.
My name is Laszlo Herman. I live on 672 Highway 206.
Okay.
I'm a southern neighbor of this giant development they are proposing.
Okay.
They are talking about everything but the major thing in his flood, okay? And all these property floods, they can put the driveway or the parking in a bag because there is no room in there, it's all flooded. The front, what they call a little depression, it's a flood area in there, and there is always filled with water. I have pictures in here since 19...
Please, excuse me, when you talk, just make sure you keep your mouth from the microphone so it's picked up, so... If you want to hold it, if you're more comfortable holding the microphone, that's fine, but just...
No, I, I'm going to talk like this.
Okay.
I have pictures and papers in here since 1978, since I moved in there, and I have papers from the Soil Conversation, EPA, mayor, township engineer, everybody's saying that shouldn't be any kind of development, any pair, because it's going to add to the problem for flooding, and I've been experiencing it since Manners was improved, Huntington Park was improved, across the street was improved, all the shopping center was improved, and all the water is coming to me. When it's a big flood, my driveway has about three or four feet of water on top of it, so we can't get out.
You are to the north of this property?
Excuse me, I'll show you.
South, I think.
This is my driveway.
South, yeah, okay.
All this is that flooded in here. Okay, the driveway they showing...
Okay, so I need you to use the microphone. Come back to the microphone. Yeah.
The driveway they showing, but they're going to make 25 feet and look, move it down from the property line. It's in a flood zone. EPA would have to approve it. And also, there is a storm basin in front of the other driveway on the top, okay, dumping all the water into that hole, and running of the, my, under my driveway, there's a pipe in there going to the brook.
Okay.
Okay, so that's why everything is flooded in there. When it's a big rain, for days, there is water in the front, that's why they can't move the building closer to the highway, okay? And also, they can't do anything in a bag either, because the bag is all filled in and is all flooded. And like I said, if you want, I have all the paperwork in here that I can provide with the copies. I made copies in here. I have, let me put my glasses on so I can see. Okay. Township engineer, Mr. Bosby, 1979, township engineer 81, there is violation by a...
Okay, so right now, you're, I'm not disagreeing with what you have, but, you know, we have no proof that this is true, so if there's some evidence you'd like to submit and...
Yes, I have.
And give copies to the, to the officials, so both sides could have that, or they could see it.
Give it to, give it to our counsel.
Give it to our attorney first.
Okay. Okay.
We're going to see if we can mark this as O1?
O1 would be correct. And then needs more K1 also. K1 for you.
O1. Now, this is the one copy, is all you have of this, sir?
Yes.
Okay. So we have to provide that to the defense, so to speak, or the applicant?
Advocate.
I'm sorry, misword. So they can look at it. So you can continue to, to say what you want, so they would have an opportunity to read what you have there.
Okay, well, I'm going to go just for the most important part of it then. I'm going to leave out some with, there is a violation since 1979 or 80 by Clermont developers. They throw all the debris from the corner widening in here on Amber Road into the brook, pushing the brook over to my side, and they were violation, they were fined by DOT and EPA and everything else. They never moved it, it's still there. I have the picture, which is, was in a Hillsboro Baker newspaper. I have a copy of it in there. And also, I have 1981, Mr. Roach, Somerset Country Planning Board. No development in the area because they can't control the runoff, okay? In here, they were presenting that runoff, they're going to control it, I would like to know how, what's going to happen with all the water. All the property usable is going to be built in with blacktop and roof. All the water, where it's going to go? Okay, it's going to end up in my driveway, in my property, because it's flooded now, it's in a back, in a side, and in front of my property. The water don't go under the bridge because the bridge was built in different angle the way the book is going now, because they pushed it over by dumping all the garbage in there.
Let me ask you something. You have your driveway flooded with three feet of water, as you said, how long does it take for it to go away?
A couple of days.
So you're stuck in your house for a couple of days?
Yes. That's why I went to, stayed, to ask them to give me the permit to fill up my driveway two sides, and finally, it was approved back in the 80s, because my wife used to park the car in the front of the property and walk up with the kids to the house because they were afraid to drive. The driveway was about eight or nine feet wide, and it was falling down on both sides because there was a big hole in there, what they call, in here in this hearing, is depression, okay? That is flooded area. It's on a 100-year flood zone, okay? I had the plans, everything, and EPA approved it, and they gave me the permit to fill up the two sides, so she's not going to go into the ditch.
Okay.
Okay? And also, I was asking the DOT, I have the letters and copies in there, so they can clean up the ditch, so the water going to go down, not into the depression, and stays in there for days, and all the mosquitoes, all the garbage, everything is going to be in there, just like in a bag, because when everything floods, all the garbage stays on my property, which I have to clean up, and I'm not 25 anymore, so it takes me a long time, and it's not that easy. And I can use anything, can go in there with machinery, because the way the paper says it by the township, they don't have the easement, so they're not allowed to come out and do anything. They recommended the mosquito department, they came out, and they said they can't do anything. They not do any kind of repairs or cleaning of the brook, and the brook is about three or four places, it's blocked up right now, because all the flowering trees, boom, the flood, okay? Also, on 6/2, 2016, I had Tina Wolf from the EPA come out and check for the wetland, and she said that she never even know there is a wetland in a front, just in a back, she wasn't informed, and she said she going to put that in her report, so I don't know if the report came in, because I never heard anything about it. Another thing is that Hillsboro have more than enough doctor's office in here. I don't think that's necessary to ruin my life and build a Chinese wall in front of my property I cannot see, and block all the wild animals in there who lives in there. They can get through in there, and we have the deer, well, I have the list in here, the animals, and I, it's a pretty long one, okay?
So, I understand, we all need that list of animals, we appreciate it.
Are there other questions you have for the, for the witnesses?
Yes, what they're going to do with the animals in there, which is protected? Okay, the eagle, the turtle, the geese, and the, all the deer and everything, and fox and everything.
Well, they're not protected, but, okay, Counselor.
Well, first address what was marked as O1. We've reviewed it, that it's not our lot and block. It also deals with mostly issues regarding DOT and Route 206. There was illegal fill from 1979, again, not at issue with this particular lot and block. And what I'd also like to do is to address the flood concerns, have Mr. Ingram explain actually that this development be improving the conditions as they currently exist, so...
And again, we did note, as I discussed earlier, that the DEP did say that there potentially was a small, isolated wetland up front. It has to be isolated because it's in a bowl, so we don't believe that we're even working in those areas, but if we were, again, we haven't received the permit, we would work on a driveway permit to be able to do so, because the only work we're doing in that area is for a driveway, which again, goes back to our point of why we're choosing to locate further back, is because we do see the, the issues with this depression, and we're trying to, if nothing else, improve it. By putting in our driveway, we're preventing upstream water from continuing to go into this bowl. We're going to direct it directly into the, into the state DOT system, so it will no longer pond in that area, and it should be substantially reduced. In the rear of the site, where we have our environmentally constrained areas, it's currently lawn. What we're proposing to do is to re-vegetate it, so if nothing else, we're improving the habitats for the animals, and we're further reducing runoff by improving the, the value of the woods compared to a lawn surface. So, really, with our application, we think, if nothing else, it should improve the situation between the two properties.
David, is that, on the test on the products, or anything you need to corroborate?
Most of the letters that were submitted as O1, Counselor's correct, that most of it has to do with the property, the Clermont development, where there was some illegal fill in the brook, and there's some letters about clearing the drainage on 206, and that's about it.
What about the flooding? What about the flooding?
I don't see anything in these letters that specifically referenced the property in question.
But it's, 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 everything floods in there, it's the same zone.
Well, I'm only, I can only say what's in the letters.
Well, I-
Well, just so you introduce it as evidence, so we're having the opportunity for our engineers and, and for the applicant to, to say what you presented, and it doesn't necessarily reference that lot and block. It references the, as, as they said, the Clermont issues up behind them, but not particularly this lot and block. What else do you have there?
What, what I'm trying to prove in here, that what runoff they gonna have-
Okay.
Is gonna be ending up on my property, and is gonna ruin my life.
I understand.
I have nothing to do with that property, because it's not mine.
I understand.
Okay? But they gonna cause problem with the runoff. How are they gonna hold it in there when the property slopes up instead of, up, out of this direction? So the water gonna run towards me. When it's a big rain, I have water in my garage, and I have a wrench, there is no way I can lift it. I can't do anything about it. Okay? I have pictures in here I can show, but I cannot introduce it, because this is all I have. Okay? I can show it to you, or make a copy and send it in, but that's it.
These are pictures of what, sir?
The flood, what I have on my property.
You wanna show the applicant first, and see if-
And, and we're, we can't deny that up there.
There, there's water there. We understand that you wouldn't be here if there's no water, but the, the fact remains is, what's the cause of, of the water? Is that, and that's what you're concerned about, sir?
The, what I'm concerned about is what they gonna do with all the water coming off, because all the usable piece of property is gonna be built in. Everything else is a flood zone. Everything else. That's why they can put the parking in a back, and also, I would like to know what they gonna do with all the noise they gonna have in there in the morning, what they gonna do with all that air conditioning system running in there, is gonna be-
Okay, so why don't you ask him one at a time about the questions you just asked? Like, what are you gonna do about the, the hours of operation possibly, that would be the noise?
He was saying that the garbage is gonna be picked up early in the morning, so what about my noise?
I mean, there may be noise from a trash truck, when they have to do minimal turning around, and again, they can turn around on site, so we're trying to minimize the amount that they need to have any sort of backup alarm on, but again, the, I believe vehicles are exempt from state noise code particularly. And normal hours of operations are, you know, as we said, are those of a normal doctor's office, you know, perhaps, you know, eight to six, with some night hours for various, you know, practices, but, you know, a, a doctor's office is compared to retail, which is, again, these are the approved uses that are in our zone, would probably be quieter than those, and certainly, we agree that our AC units and our HVAC systems will have to comply with the state noise code. They'll be properly screened and buffered to try and limit the noise from those structures as required.
Where they gonna be installed, in the back or the top?
Uh, we were not proposing rooftop, we were proposing ground mount.
So it's gonna be behind the building?
Yes.
So it's gonna be giving a lot of noise, it's not gonna be in, and also, it's gonna be closer to my house then? Than the ten feet you're proposing in here?
No, we're not proposing any closer than the ten feet.
So the building is not gonna be ten feet away?
The building will be ten feet, the air conditioning-
Then how you gonna put air conditioning behind, it's not gonna be less than ten feet?
That's aside. Behind is farther west, not south, towards you.
Uh, to the west.
Yeah.
So not, not, not the back of the building as, as it faces your property.
Back of the property.
Yeah.
And the, and the rear from the street.
And a clarification on the, the water, I, I read that the downspouts from the roof were gonna be piped to the detention basin, so all the drainage is going to go into the detention basin, correct? Which is on the north side of the driveway, and parking lot.
Again, except for the rear roof leaders, but again, that's substantially less than goes there now, and also, with the changes we've presented tonight, that we propose to make, to make the building half the size, that'll mean that we're talking about half as much roof area-
Right.
That would even be going there, in that eventual case.
So when you're asking the question about where the water's gonna be going from the impervious surface, that's the answer, right?
Well, the retention basin is gonna be up in the top, next to the driveway, which is about three feet higher than the property I am on. How are they gonna put it up there? They gonna pump it?
We're altering the grade of the property and installing curbs and walls, so that we can make the water go in that direction.
So you're gonna increase the height of the property next door, I gonna get more water coming to me?
No, we're, because there's curbs and walls between all the upstream properties, we're gonna end up picking up all that water and sending it to the street before it ever gets to your property.
You are proposing to put in the driveway, middle of the ditch in there, but this EPA is holding all the water back. How you gonna do that?
I don't understand the, the concern, because all the properties to the north drain to your property. So if our development goes in and cuts all that off, we're inevitably reducing the amount of water that you're receiving.
No, it's not draining to my property, it's draining to highway, and draining in a back.
Correct.
Okay? It's not coming to my property, it's gonna come to my property now, after you're gonna put all this up.
I'm sorry, I don't understand.
But I think they're saying it's gonna go to a basin, so it's gonna all be routed and captured, right?
Well, our water will go to a basin, but the, I think the real concern is-
So there's no way it can make it to his property through the street to two oh six and back, any, any other way?
Correct.
It's going, it's being routed-
And our point is, we improve a step further, because it's not just our property, there are many upstream properties that are draining in this direction. All of those will be cut off by this development and sent to that state system, rather than draining to this pit that exists between the properties. We also note that we, we do have a delineated flood plane on our plan at elevation seventy-two. It's about eight feet lower than our development, so we're well outside of those limits, and again, that's being reviewed by DEP at this point. So, nothing we're proposing is anywhere near an actual regulated flood zone.
Okay.
I still don't understand, and they never gave me an answer on it. How you gonna get the water from the bottom in there, up to the top, to the basin?
The water that's in the bottom by your driveway, they're not touching that water.
Not, not, what's coming off from the building. Okay?
What's coming off the building?
Has to go about twenty-five feet or thirty feet to the basin.
Those are being, those are being piped directly to the, and on, to the retention basin on the north side of the property.
We're picking them up before they get to the ground. So in the front of the building, the front of the building, into the parking lot, is gonna go into the parking lot, under the parking lot, and it's gonna go towards the basin. The back of the building may have a roof leader that continues to go south, but it's substantially less than goes there now.
Nothing goes in there now? There's no building in there?
All runoff from our property goes in there now.
No, it's not.
Ask her.
I live in there since seventy-eight, I know what I have.
All the, all the contours from properties to the north and our property head to the front of your, to, to a shared point, a low point, in the front between these two lots.
All goes in a front basin, what you call the depression?
Yes.
All the water goes in there, and goes under my driveway, and goes to the brook?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So that's what I'm asking, what you gonna do with all that water? You gonna pump it up to the basin?
No, that water will continue to go there, but it's less area heading to it.
I'm too dumb to understand how you gonna get the water up. Okay, you wanna take a pictures, or look at the pictures, or you're not interested?
We, we believe that there's water there, sir. I, I, they can, you could show it to them, I just, but I don't think that-
Since nineteen seventy-eight, I'm getting all these letters from everybody, mayors, everybody. Mr. Beyond D was the only one who ever came out and see the property. Nobody ever came out. Okay? And everybody is saying, yes, we are sorry it happened to you, but we can't do anything. Okay? So I'm getting the same thing now. Yes, it's gonna be a little bit a problem, because you're gonna get the water in there, but what, we can't do anything.
We haven't approved the application.
I'm trying to stop this master-
We haven't approved the application yet, sir. In fact, they're gonna come back with another drawing of a whole nother building in the next meeting, so I would suggest you come back.
I know, but that's what happened across the street from me, at the industrial park, when I went to Europe, because my mother was in a hospital. Okay? By the time I came back, they changed the zoning, and they put the thing in there anyway.
I, I don't believe what you just said is accurate, as far as we're saying there's gonna be a further problem for you, and there's nothing we can do about it. I think that, as the engineer stated on the record, that there will be less of a water problem, because the water will be interrupted before it reaches your property. So just the opposite has actually been said on record, that, that it's not that the problem is gonna get worse, that the impact of the water is gonna be worse for you.
Okay.
So, I just, I just wanted to get that on record, that-
Okay. With all due respect, sir, I've been promised that so many times, when Mr. Venice was the planning board president, and everybody else promised me, you're gonna get better, because they're gonna put in a miss, a detention basin. And I'm getting more flood than in nineteen seventy-nine, seventy-eight, eighty-two, eighty-five. Now, it's unbelievable how much water is coming down, and they putting a, a new development next to the post office again. All that water is gonna come to me.
It, it ca-
There is no way you can hold-
Yeah, it can't, it can't impact your, you have every right. I had the same situation on my own property, where houses were being built, and that created a water impact on my property. And I came to the planning board before I was on the planning board, and requested a modification to the drainage system to prevent any impact on my property. You, you have every right, if that's happening, you have every right to request that. That's not what's happening here, is that this property does not appear unless, you know, our engineer says, states something differently that we don't see. It's not creating an impact, a water impact on your property. But this property can't remedy the problem that you have on your property. Okay? See, that, and that's an important point, is that they can't, they can't do something to remedy the problem on your property. All they can do is prevent any further impact from their property onto your property.
Okay. I'm not asking them to do any of that. What I'm trying to do is try to stop more water coming to me, because like I said, I was promised every development, they're gonna have the retention basin, and they do, and I'm still getting more flooded. Okay? And when the manor was put in, okay, they never approved the retention basin, because there was no room for it, and in here too, they are proposing it, but it's never gonna work, I'm gonna end up with more. So, is anybody interested to see the pictures?
I, I think what we hear is, that is your opinion, that, and we understand, we know you have water, and your opinion is, is that this is not going to be helpful. All we can rely on is our experts that tell us whether in fact there is gonna be an increased or a decreased amount of water on your property. So we, I think we hear what you're saying, that you believe that this is gonna create more water.
Yes.
All that, all we can ask the applicant and their experts to do is to testify, and, and they have to be held to that, that that is not true. And they, they have done that.
So, sir, I, I, we, we understand your concern, we do, because, and we, we face it with every development that we, that we undertake here in Hillsborough, because we just, we have a flooding problem, we recognize that. I think the concern here is that, or the, what we're trying to understand is how this will lessen the problem, and we're relying upon professionals' reports to tell us that any new development like this has to, by DEP requirements, alleviate the, lessen the, the stormwater flow. So it has to make it better than it is. That's not to say it's, it's gonna completely help your problem, but it's gonna, it should not make it worse, and that's the situation that we're trying to understand. If the engineer wants to come in, I'd be happy to have him do that. The other piece, I just, if you have pictures there, we'd be happy to, to see them. I, my suggestion would be, though, if, if those are your only copies, I would suggest you make copies of them, and then bring them in and, and give them to our planner, we'll put them in the file, and we'll make sure he makes sure we get copies of them all. I just don't wanna take your, your originals.
Thank you, but try to make the point, what I wanna make in here, is that I'm not looking for less water, I'm not looking for anything else, but more water don't come to my property.
I understand. I, I completely understand.
Because now, I have a ditch between my property and my next-door neighbor, okay, who is my son-in-law, he lives in there with my daughter. Okay? So I know what the property looks like and what it is. Is anybody from the board took a walk, or, you know, look it over, what they got trying to put in there? Nobody did. They don't know what it is. And that's what I have all the time. Every time I tell somebody, they don't believe me. I went to the board, and they said, where is this picture what they had? And my house is on it.
Mr. White?
The board could ask the applicant to do analysis of that low area. The, the analysis performed was for the site specific. What we could do is ask them for an analysis of that, pre and post of that low area, to show that, demonstrate that there is no impact, or if there is an impact, or positive reduction.
We have no objection to that.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, but, but do you understand what he just said?
No.
All right, so he's going, if, if there was an approval given, they're gonna do analysis of your, of the property as it is now, and they're gonna do analysis of the property after it's done, to provide the, the fact that there was no increase in runoff of water, or possibly a decrease in runoff of water, based on the engineering of the plan.
Okay, and what that analysis, or whatever that word you were using, what is gonna be that? Who's gonna make that, or what, what is that all about? Cause I have no idea what that means.
So they're gonna have a professional engineering staff do a test, to make sure that it, if, if they had the application granted, that what they're testifying is actually true. And if it's not true, and there is an issue, then they have to correct it.
Okay. Another thing, the property, oh, I'm sorry. According to the ordinance, it needs two hundred feet wide, this is only a hundred twenty-five. Okay? And also, in the ordinance, they said that they get to have the planning board approval for cutting the trees down. Okay? Anything six inch or bigger has to be approved, and all the trees on the property line is more than six inch. So it's all gonna be taken down according to the plans. And what's gonna happen with the trees overhanging to the other property?
We're, we're not proposing to remove any trees, we don't have to. Everything along the property line that we don't have to touch will remain. We have tree replacement calculations, and we're establishing many more trees than we're removing, and revegetating the entire constrained area in the, in the back that's subject to DEP.
Okay. Another thing is, what's gonna happen to the traffic?
We, we are gonna be generating traffic from the property. It's, it's inevitable. We have a DOT application, which the traffic generated by our site is regulated by the state, because it's a state highway, and they will review it, and, and their approval would be contingent upon our satisfying them with regard to that.
Now, it takes me about fifteen, twenty minutes to get out of my house if I wanna make a left turn. If I wanna make a right turn, it's about half of that, but I was told at the meeting once in here by the mayor and the engineer, that it's not gonna get any worse, it's bad enough as is. And it's every time, every time they put up a light, or development, shop, shop, right shopping center, stop train shop, and everything else, it's getting worse and worse, it's impossible to get out. Okay? So I don't know, and I don't know how many customers you're gonna have, and the parking is not gonna be enough for thirty-two parking spaces for all the customers and all that noise all day long I have to put up with. How you gonna reduce that?
Again, we're, we're trying to, we're putting a use into this property, that's what the town has determined is an appropriate use. They don't, you know, residential is not what the township wants in this location. So unfortunately, there are many non-conforming properties, we just happen to be the first of those to come in and try and essentially build what the township requests. For those reasons, inevitably, we, we're creating traffic, and we're creating use on the property. We're trying to do that in a way that minimizes its impact on the neighbors, by working with the township and changing the orientation of the building, adding buffers, doing what we can to mitigate that.
Well, it's not confirming now my property because they changed the zoning and the whole thing. But it was confirming when they approved the building permit to put my house, okay? And also that is a residential, which is I don't have to put up with all these and everything is gonna be ruined and my property is gonna be worthless, okay? Because you're gonna put the Chinese wall in there without any kind of light or coming in. What's gonna happen? How am I gonna refill my well? No water's gonna come in because you are taking all the water and pipe it somewhere else. It's not gonna go inside the ground.
Well, that's, you know.
Now you argue both sides of.
So the situation is that the, is that they are within the ordinance to put that building up, okay? The gateway, the zoning allows that now, so.
The two hundred feet wide property?
No, I'm not saying that's if to get the variance to do it, but the fact that the application is the, is within line to put that type of use on that property. Whether they get the application based on the building they designers hasn't been decided yet. But if, just for example, if they don't, but another company comes in and builds a building suitable to fit that lot, they are allowed if it fits in the variance based on the new zoning. So that, that, that we cannot determine. What we are trying to determine here is if the building meets the property sizing constraints that we feel is the best for the property. And we have yet to determine that. And they're gonna come back next week, or next meeting with a building that is an alternate proposal, which I suggest you come back and see what they have.
I can't do that, I have to go to Europe, my brother's in hospital.
I'm sorry to hear that. Can your son come and be your, be your proxy? Have someone come that will look out for you? So I would suggest that, okay? If you have no other questions for this witness, we, it's nine thirty. We usually don't take any new testimony after nine thirty. So if we have any other questions for this witness?
I'm looking in a second. My question is that the EPA was notified about the wall in the driveway and they know that you're gonna move it?
DEP is not reviewing our particular plan at this point. They're reviewing what we have told them is the constrained areas. If they agree with us, there's no reason for us to get a permit. If they disagree, we may need to either change something or submit for an additional permit, but we won't know that till they respond.
But they know that you're gonna move the driveway and cut the ditch in half?
No, they don't know that at this point. It's not.
How they gonna approve it?
It's not subject to their approval at this point. We're gonna receive.
We haven't gotten the LOI yet.
Yeah, when we receive those, we'll make any appropriate changes to the plans or apply for any additional permits, but we don't see any issue with that.
Okay, well, I'm getting a send as every meeting. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. House.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right. So I know this, we'll probably have to carry this over to another meeting. Do we have a next schedule available to adjourn to?
How much time do you think you need to?
The next meeting is.
I'm not sure what the next available slot is. They would have to look and see. Well, you have to get the plans ready.
Get some for the next meeting.
It's gonna be, it's gonna be the first week of July, this week in July seventh, I think.
July seventh.
I'm sorry. July seventh, have spots open for?
The next meeting, July seventh, Glenn Gary's supposed to come back with their subdivision application. We have one other fairly small application on that night, the Kitty Academy on Route two oh six. They need to adjust some variances. The next meeting after that is July fourteenth, which is the Meadow Brook, which will probably be the full night. After that, it would be December first, you know, meeting in August.
All right, so if we, how many more, how much more testimony do you think you have to provide based on the new plan?
The revisions to the plan, I think, would be the extent.
Right, we wouldn't be rehashing all the testimony that was given tonight. We'd just be going over the modifications to the site plan.
Okay. So we can slot them and see you got Glenn Gary, they, as of now, they said they're gonna be ready, so that could change.
I don't know how long that would take. They were supposed to come back with a traffic report and an LSRP to testify.
So that's just the subdivision?
That's the subdivision.
No site plan?
No, subdivision, but they were gonna come back because the board had requested additional information.
And the traffic study.
And the Kitty Academy is, basically, they, they came in, they put the foundation too close to the property line so they have to come back and amend their variance.
Forgiveness?
Yes, exactly.
All right, so we'll put you for the seventh.
Ten days prior for all plans?
At a minimum.
Yeah, especially if there's any major changes, so Mr. White has time because we have the holiday there that's gonna interfere.
Certainly.
So with that, I will, are you anything else?
Without further notice?
Right.
There'll be no further notice of this application, so anybody that's here.
Seventh, July seventh.
All right, so we have a motion to close up, public comment?
Second.
Second. On favor?
Aye.
All right, okay. So we've moved to this to the seventh with no further notice required.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cameron.
Okay. So I believe there's nothing else.
The only thing would be to cancel the business meeting on June twenty-third, there's no business that night.
Okay. We have a motion to cancel the June twenty-third meeting?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Now, I will say that I will not be here the seventh for that meeting. I know I'll be out of town. So if anyone else that's not gonna be here for that meeting, do we know?
Possibly.
So Mr. Hashtag is not gonna be here, possibly Mr. Wagon. So you and Sally will have to find out about Stephanie.
One, two, three, four.
Mr. Connors.
We need one more. Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Seven up. Okay.
So you'll be here to take care of that?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Third.
On favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.
All right, twenty-third.